We're. We are live.
Is everyone live?
Yes, we are.
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to call the guys in council meeting to order it's about seven oh one. And all council members are here. First, we'll have the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, two identities, liberty and justice for all. Roll call council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Botkins.
Here.
Ms. Earlston.
Here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
You know, a roll call elected official, Safety Service Director.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Trish.
Here.
Director Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, we've all had a chance to read the August eleventh meeting. Do we have a motion to approve them?
Yeah, Carl, I'll make the motion to approve the August eleventh twenty twenty regular meeting minutes.
Okay, Mr. Baldinger made the motion. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that, Carl.
Mr. Richard's seconded the motion. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Likewise, the minutes of the August eleventh meeting have been approved as presented. All the three items went through council, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as published.
TME, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Okay, Mrs. Earlston made the motion, seconded.
Ivy.
Mr. Ivy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Likewise, the agenda has been approved by the unanimous vote. Okay, moving on to the legislation first, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty four. It's a second reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifty four entitled amending section eleven ninety three point oh six C of the codified ordinances of the city of Galleon relating to street alignments.
Julie, read the ordinance discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Members, just a real brief reminder what this is. This came through law and ordinance, and essentially it is removing the maximum length for a cul-de-sac in this ordinance. As far as I know, there's no rush on this particular legislation. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Anybody else have comments on this? Has any council member received any input from the public?
I haven't, Carl.
Okay. There's no discussion. We'll go through, consider the second reading and we'll move on next meeting for the third final reading. Okay, next is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty five is first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifty five entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder therefore as provided by law for various street paving improvements, authorizing payment therefore and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you heard the reading of the ordinance discussion on this?
Yeah, Carl, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In section two of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, now this for our, this is for our street city, not, not the Harding Way project. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the, the three ninety is, is I think in the legislation, I'm not sure exactly why, but I would suggest it's probably there to avoid having bids come in that were over our in-house estimate and then not be able to award it. So I think that's, that three ninety is going to end up being more like three fifty or three sixty in that range, Gail.
Hey, well, I've just, my question was in the next legislation coming up, those, when I total those two numbers, it only comes out to like three forty-five. And I just wondered if that conflict was going to cause us a problem or not.
I don't think it caused a problem. It allows us, we get bids over that to be able to award those bids.
But we won't have the money appropriated for it to spend, is what I'm saying.
If you don't pass this, we won't, right?
Oh, isn't it? Trying not to drag the next piece of legislation in, but when I total those two numbers up, they do not match this. So therefore we'll only have three hundred and forty-five appropriated to spend. This is just going out for bids, not to exceed three ninety. I think it's, that might cause us an issue. I don't know. I've been looking for some guidance here.
Anybody want to address that? Brian? Eunice?
There?
Well, you know, I have to, I, it's hard for me to, I have to go look at that ordinance. It's hard to see it at the same time. There, Eunice is there. Maybe she has a, can it help us?
I believe Brian was trying to talk. He is muted.
Is that better now?
That's better, okay.
Okay, yeah, so what I was pointing out or was asking the mayor, I believe that what Gail is looking at is appropriations. There are already funds available in those, the street funds over and above the money that we're transferring, so we're not in a problem on that.
Okay, that's, yeah, well, when I looked at them appropriations that we're doing, they didn't total up to the enough money here. So that, that's why I needed some guidance on that. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Didn't skip over you. I just couldn't hear you, okay? Any other questions? Comments on this ordinance?
Carl, I do, I do believe this needs to be passed as an emergency.
I think almost the first September here, Mary, that's probably correct, is it not?
I, I would agree. We've looked at, we'd like to, if it passes tonight, they'll be advertising for this. I think Saturday, and we'd like to get it awarded.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty five. It is something that we do every year, and I think we've done a, really a great job of taking those streets and slowly and systematically improving the quality of life for the, you know, entire community. So I'm urging us to carry this motion and pass it tonight.
You heard the motion to suspend the rules in this ordinance, but Dr. Felner, do you have a second?
I can do.
Okay, Mr. Triplett seconded. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules passed by seven and zero vote. Now discussion on the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pass twenty twenty dash fifty five.
Okay, Mr. Triplett made the motion to pass the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Botkins.
Mr. Botkins seconded. Discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
The motion to pass the ordinance passed by seven and a vote. Moving on, the next ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifty six entitled ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash eighty-five permanent twenty twenty appropriations by appropriating funds from unappropriated funds and transferring funds in various funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you heard the reading of the ordinance to, to have a discussion?
Yeah, Carl, this comes through Finance Committee. These are various appropriations that are being amended, and I'm going to turn this over to Brian or Eunice, whichever one wants this for explanation.
I'm, I'm going to ask Eunice. She did a marvelous job on this at the Finance Committee, so I'll ask her to do it again tonight.
Thank you, Brian. To go through this by each section, as we usually do, section two, that is an increase in the appropriations for payments that we make every month for Westmore to the county. Section three is appropriating funds that we received an insurance check for, for damage to a slide. So to make that payment and put that money back, we received a check from the insurance. We now need to appropriate it into the fund where it was paid from. Section four is for software for the shelter and ball field rentals at the parks. Section five is for urban, the urban paving overages such as the thermal striping. The bid amount came in higher, and there's also curb cut in there. Section six is to appropriate funds for the city paving project. Section seven and section eight are both for an increase of forty-two thousand dollars for the Health Department. They received additional funding, and this appropriates that grant money for them to be able to expend it. Section nine, ten, and eleven are all kind of what I would call cleanup from the debt. We had some funds that came into one oh one. We have to put them into a transfer line to transfer it out of one oh one into four oh one as reflected in section ten, and then appropriate it in section eleven. So that's why you see that same exact amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand through sections nine, ten, and eleven, because it's three different steps to get that funding in place for expenditure. And I would like to request that this be done as an emergency. If there's any questions, I'll do what I can.
Eunice, could you please go over section, section six again? I didn't catch that one.
I'm not as good at that one. I might have to have the mayor jump in and help me again like he did at finance. That is for the city paving project.
Oh, I thought section five was for that, for the curb cutout.
Section five is the urban paving.
Okay.
Project.
Okay. And that, is that for the curb cutout that came in over what?
Yeah, that covers three different items.
Okay, so that's section five, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then, yeah, so section six, I just missed it when you went over it. I'm not questioning it. I just didn't catch what you had said.
Understand. And I don't know if the mayor wants to elaborate any further on that.
No, I think we had an unappropriated balance in the state. It's two oh two fund. Excuse me, I got caught with my mouth full. My mom would be like ashamed. Anyway, it's three items on that. There was an increase, the type of pavement markings that we'll see will be more of a permanent pavement marking. They'll burn them into the asphalt. There was an initial about fourteen thousand dollar overrun in the bid prices. So we are, our share increased. And then finally is what you were asking about, TME, and that was the, the curb cuts. That was about eighty thousand dollars. So that's where the one seventeen comes from.
So that, that's like five and six kind of combined, correct?
Um.
No, Mayor, if you could explain section six a little bit better. I'm not, that's more of the separate paving that we're doing, just the city's part.
This was what Gail was asking about. This is additional revenue that will need to be able to do that three hundred and sixty-five or three hundred and seventy thousand dollar non-urban paving.
That's the streets that we've been discussing. Okay, gotcha.
And I, and I, the shortest explanation is that the, our revenue into fund two oh one, the regular street fund is off. I think most people recognize that because of the, the reduction in gas tax revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question on section four. Is that a one-time charge or what is that? That's also expensive for software.
I'm looking for the email Tasha sent me. I don't know if the mayor or Nikki has.
Yeah, that's the, that is the cost of the software that we use to track our rental use.
And if I'm not mistaken.
Rentals, we still owe that fee. And if I'm, I, I believe that the, what we're going to do this coming year is schedule the ball fields and and the use of the other parts of the park through that same system, so. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, that software also generates the receipts that are then given to our office that we balance the revenues. It's part of our supporting documentation as well.
I'm not sure if Nikki is on, if she has anything additional to.
No, you've covered, you've covered it, Tom. It is the, the software that people can use to go online and book rather than calling the office. So trying to get, make it a little bit more convenient for people to be able to reserve these shelters. So that's what that is for. We're allowed up to, I don't remember, we had to increase it a little bit because I think we were only allowed six. So in order to have the ball fields included, we bumped it up a little bit to the next level, and it's right around four thousand dollars. And that is an annual fee mark.
Okay, thanks. That's SSI?
No, it's a specialty software, and I, off the top of my head, can't remember what it's called, but it, it's a completely separate. It's basically a Parks and Rec software, specialized software.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Eunice, for the great explanation of these, all these items. And we also, Eric Baldinger is with us tonight. Do you have any comments on this since it falls in your category? Eric?
No, I have, I was here in case there was questions on the cul-de-sacs.
Okay, okay. Anything else? There is an urgency. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make that motion to suspend the rules on this legislation and proceed to the final reading.
The motion by Dr. Felner, do you have a second?
I'll second, Carl.
Mr. Richard seconded. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules is passed by seven oh vote. Now discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Triplett.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty days fifty-six.
Read the motion by Mr. Triplett to pass this ordinance. Do we have a second?
Botkins.
Mr. Botkins seconded. Discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
It is passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to other business. Any committee reports or announcements? Who wants to start? Yeah. Mr. Richard?
Yes, law ordinance will be on September first. And barring the opportunity to go back to regular council chambers, it will be on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, September first, you got that, seven o'clock. Mr. Triplett?
September second, seven o'clock.
Okay. Who wants to go?
I will, Carl. Fine. Should be September sixteenth at seven o'clock on Zoom.
Okay.
On Tuesday, September fifteenth, seven PM via Zoom.
Okay, Mrs. Earlston?
Police, Fire, and Health will be September seventeenth via Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Ivy?
I need help. I am out back with no calendar in front of me.
Is that economic development?
That'd be Parks and Rec.
Yeah, that's, I've got September fifteenth. Julie, is that correct?
No, or he's, he's Parks and Rec. That's September.
Sorry.
Julie, what was that, please?
September ninth.
Thank you. And same as Mr. Richard pending, you know, we'll be on Zoom unless things clear up a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Botkins?
It'll be September tenth via Zoom.
Okay. Council have any other business to be brought for the meeting tonight?
I have a, a man approached me this last week and brought me a list of things that he'd like to look into if we could. Dave Schieber that lives in Cheshire Estate, Surrey Drive. He wanted to know if we could get some secondary power line tree trimming. And he wanted to know what the easement size was on his property. And he was wanting to know if we could do anything on street repairs at all. And he said he'd like to see some more public, the, the police patrolling during the school hours and stuff because they're getting an awful lot of traffic and they're speeding down through their neighborhood. And naturally, like other people over the years, I'd like to see Highland Drive maybe opened up to alleviate some of the traffic on their ground, which I don't blame him for that. And then there was one last thing, cleaning of a ditch on his property, which he said they cleaned part of it and never finished it. I don't know the reason why. Maybe it didn't need anymore at that time. But that's all I have from him, and he just brought me a list, and I haven't had a chance because I've been home ill. This is my first day out of the house, so I'm going to look around and see what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else have anything? I, I did receive an email and I'll get with the mayor, whoever, the next day or so. I just got it yesterday concerning requests. Supposedly they're starting a petition to get a four-way stop sign at the corner of Church and Union. So we'll get with, I'll get with you, Mayor, and we'll talk about it, okay? It's, yes.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Briney was the one that contacted me by, by email. I did not talk to her, okay?
Okay.
Anything else? If not, Auditor Trish?
I have nothing for tonight, Carl, other than we will probably be getting in September and October, getting to the end of the year, and we'll be talking about budget, so be prepared.
Okay. Next, Mr. Sparks, is he, did he come on, surely, Julie?
No.
Okay. Okay, Lord Richard Palmer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. How about Mayor Oliver?
I've got a vicious dog growling in the background, so I'll get it to walk away. I think what I would like to say are a couple of things to echo what Brian was saying. We've set up a, I guess tentative timetable for budget submission. I think it will allow council to have plenty of chance to review it at the committee level and then also not be in a situation where they have to approve next year's budget on a first reading. So we've worked that out. We'll see how it goes, and it's a lot of work to be done on that between now and November, early December. So that's on next year's budget. Another item that I don't want to dwell on, but I want to reinforce how frustrated and in certain sense disappointed we are with the continuing behavior at High Sea Park. The destruction's not acceptable. We're working on extra staffing. We're trying to pinpoint when the, it's not vandalism in the sense that somebody writes their initials or some profane word. It's just outright property destruction. So we're going to work on that. We've got cameras on order. And if, if, if it were to persist, I think we're probably going to, and we are working on trying to find a source of funds to pay rewards. It appears, last thing I'd say on this topic, it appears that the damage that happened today happened between four AM when the night shift police walked the, the playground and mid-morning when it was discovered or, you know, when the, when the street department was going out to do their daily maintenance out there, discovered some destruction. So it's it's extremely frustrating, and, and we've involved the police to as great extent as possible. And I think we're working on a, a, a plan that ultimately will stem that. So if you've seen that or read it on social media, we had another incident and yeah, I'm not quite sure what more to say about that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
What is the damage that's being done? Are they breaking? What is the damage that's being done?
You know, the, the, the latest round of vandal, intentional destruction, it's not vandalism of Mr. Earlston, are a couple of those acoustic toys. If you've been down there, the cymbals and one of the other, I want to call it a sort of vibraphone, and they were bent off at the, at the, at the joint where, you know, it's fastened to the concrete. So somebody did, didn't just fall into it. It was intentional and but we're working on it, and if you hear about it, it's not being taken lightly, and we're just not going to let what appeared to be a couple dozen kids with nothing to do, you know, to, to spoil what otherwise are great when you go down there. And there aren't any sort of early teenagers causing trouble. It's a, it's a great thing for people of all ages. When this group descends, it really ruins the fun for everyone. So I think everyone on the Zoom meeting was a teenager once, and I'm, you know, this wrong way to act as a teenager. It's just, I, I really have no interest in supporting that, and I know the PD is really taking it seriously in, in terms of trying to, trying to do what they can, so.
Mayor, I know when I was there, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, the, the, all, all the little things you ding on the drums with, those were all cut off, and the cymbals was missing then, so.
Yeah, that's where, where that, that, that particular toy.
It's a really nice toy because my grandkids love it, so.
Yeah, I know. It's, it is highly frustrating. I, I'm almost without words, so I'll move on. Maybe to answer a, a question about Charles Street in advance, we are working on that. There, there are a couple of issues that need to be cleared up. On the good news side of it, we do have the, you know, traffic's open. We've got some corrective work to do and expect to have a, a meeting with the city engineer and go over that and come up with a plan to, to fix that. It's, it's it's not acceptable to tie in the neighbors the way it's been left right now, so we're going to work on that. And I know, I know people have been out and, and doing the rounds. So council members have been approached by citizens about that. We're well aware of it. I guess on, on that one, two for two, we're pretty, I'm pretty disappointed in where that project is right now, but we'll, we'll get it fixed before we start tying in new customers to the system. You know, other than that, I think that some of the things we talked about a couple of weeks ago about the trying to determine where the funds are going to come from for this year's street program. You know, that's been worked out. I do appreciate Dr. Felner's comments about making progress on the streets, and I know Gail had made a comment, I think it committed. making progress on the streets, and I know, uh, Gail had made a comment, I think at committee a couple of weeks ago, but you can see a difference, and, um, that's appreciated. Uh, I think when you look at our, our paving program in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty thousand, um, in this now, um, five hundred or so thousand that is in the Harding Way project, we're going to have a, a, a real solid repaving product or program. And I'm, you know, I think like all of us, hopeful that it'll be, uh, the results will, you know, will show the, the, the kind of investment that, that has been put in, both of gas tax and license plate tax, so. Um, I suppose that's it. We're, you know, it's having more fun than we're supposed to have at, at my age, so. There are some questions. We'll kind of go on, or if not, I appreciate you listening.
I was out by today, the apartment, we, apartment complex behind Arby's, and it looks like they're got quite a few rented, but the car is sitting there. Are you familiar with, with the progress on that?
That's good. I think the rental is going real well. There is a meeting now that you mentioned it tomorrow night. Uh, all the necessary adjacent property owners have been notified, and the purpose of the meeting is Board of Zoning Appeals, and it's to request the same set of variances that were approved on the first two buildings on what were the original, um, remaining three buildings. So, uh, I do think, uh, that the, the occupancy and the running's going well. Um, and so, you know, we'll see. I, I certainly expect some, uh, attendance at that meeting tomorrow, but I also am hopeful that that'll get approved and, um, you know, we'll have an ultimate, you know, finally we'll have, um, I think there's thirty-six, so whatever. We'll have another fifty or so, uh, units. Uh, and so that's a real positive thing that the developer's going to go ahead and invest in. Um, was going to ask the BZA to make the same sort of variance, uh, approvals that they had in the first, the first round of the first two buildings, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, uh,
Yeah.
I actually had a tour of the buildings, and they're absolutely beautiful. They have already rented out all the one bedrooms in the building that's completed. There's no more left, and they've already rented one out, um, in the building they're still working on. Um, they had, she had like three people waiting on approval, so it looks like it's filling up really fast, so I think that's great news. They were starting on the garages
Mm-hmm.
to go with them, and they said those will go up pretty quickly. They thought those would be done in a week or so, so they were really, really nice.
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad you got a chance to go through there. There, there, uh, you know, I'm, I'm about four or five decades. It seems like before decades past apartment living. Uh, but for somebody for whom that's the, the, the option, these are real nice units. And, um, and, uh, I'm sure that, that word will get to the, uh, to the developer. They'll be in town tomorrow to, uh, present at the BZA meeting, so thanks.
Okay, thank you for the report. Anybody else have, have any questions? Bring up tonight? I, I wanted to bring up Charles Street, but I knew better, but I'm glad you brought it up, and it's near, near an end, Bear, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the end, it's, um, no, it's not, Carl, to be honest. We've got it, we've got to make some decisions, and there's some things that were completed in the project that don't meet um, our local standard, and we're going to have a conversation with the designer, who's also the city engineer and get that rectified. I, without arguing the case over Zoom meeting, I really think our, um, responsibility as to, uh, what happened is, is, is limited. Uh, we're not free of fault, but it's limited, and most of what I think, uh, we have to correct is, has to do with, um, design errors that didn't meet our local, uh, ordinance requirements. So. Anyways, we'll work through it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, if nothing else, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, make that motion.
Mr. Trevor made a motion to adjourn by, Mrs. Earlston, uh, favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What was it like, was the meeting here by adjourned at seven thirty-six?
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Well. Good night.